Well, folks, it is time for us to begin. Thank you, everybody who has logged in for this town hall meeting. We, this is our first Sunday resuming just online worship. So we'll be live streaming at 11 o'clock. And so because of that, we'll have to end no later than 10:45 so that Pastor Steve and I can get ready in the sanctuary for that live streaming. But I don't anticipate that we're going to go up to that time or even over it by any means. So what I'm going to ask everybody to do is to mute themselves when you're not speaking, so that we don't have background noise that will interfere with everybody else being able to hear it. Are you all aware how to do that? It looks like just about everybody is muted now, which is great. And then we are going to have an opportunity to make comments, give input, and ask questions during this time. We'll make it as interactive as possible. So if you could write your questions in the chat room. And if anybody needs help with that, there's a little button that you press that will reveal a chat room. And in my screen, it's to the right of the pictures. And then you can just type something in there, and then everybody will be able to see it. Anybody having troubles with that? Okay. If not, the other option would be that if you're having difficulties in using the chat room, just raise your hand if you have a question or comment. And then I will call on you, and we'll be able to hear you do that and make your question or comment. So any questions about that so far? Thank you. We have seven shorter presentations on things that are very important for the life of St. Mark's Lutheran Church. And so some of them are going to be kind of brief and just sharing information. Some of them will be longer, and that might lead to questions or more dialogue. And so we'll try and pace ourselves throughout. At the moment, I'm planning to ask people or invite people to make comments at the end of each of the presentations. If there's a lot of them, I might ask you to hold all your comments or questions until the very end, so that we can make sure we have a chance to share all the information that we want to. So.
For some reason, I can't get any audio. Mute that. Mute that noise. Thank you.
Okay. Linda?
She can't hear. I don't think she's getting audio. She said.
Okay. Okay. Are we able to help by muting her?
I, yeah.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. Well, very good. Then let me just begin with a short word of prayer before we start sharing information. Let us pray. Loving God, I thank you very much for St. Mark's Lutheran Church, for the congregation and its many ministries and the way that it touches people, and for the people that have gathered here this morning to look at the business that you've given us to be about. I ask that you give us a sense of common vision and goal and a willingness to work together empowered by your Holy Spirit. We pray in Christ's name. Amen. Very good. Thank you. Let's begin then with hearing a report from Carol Rest, our stewardship team leader on the results of the stewardship fall appeal so far.
Hi, everybody. I'm Carol Rest, your stewardship team leader. It's great to see everybody here, even in the virtual presence. I kind of feel like we should be arranged to where we sit in the church, so I have an idea of some of the people. First, I just wanted to remind you that your pledges are commitments that were made by our members to support the church through your financial giving. And they help us plan to budget for our ministries and help us recruit and secure our pastoral and our staff members. So we appreciate every pledge because it says that you care about St. Mark's. So far, we have 155 pledges. And as you guys all know, our goal is 180. So that means we need about 25 more to meet our challenge goal. And generous members have stepped up to agree to give $10,000 if we reach that 180 pledge goal. So we're very close. If you haven't sent in your pledge, it's never too late. So let me break down some interesting numbers on those pledges. Out of 155, we have 48 that have increased their giving for next year, 82 have remained the same, and 25 had decreased their pledging. So in total, we have $445,141 committed so far this year. That is in line with what we have as of last year, which I think is pretty good. So I would like to continue that momentum and celebrate if we get that 188. We can just be really proud of ourselves. So if you haven't sent yours in, there's not too late. We're very thankful and grateful because it means you guys commit to St. Mark's. So please pray, if you haven't sent one in, pray about how it really makes a decision in your life. And by writing it down on a piece of paper and sending it to church, it means that you are committed and you feel like you can participate in those ministries. So thank you, guys, for everyone who's sent one in. I appreciate it very, very much. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Carol, for the work that you and your whole team are doing.
Absolutely.
Let's go to Case Pudick, our congregational president, to talk about the timeline for the senior pastor call process.
Thank you, Pastor. Good morning, everyone. Nice to see all of your faces. I haven't seen some of you probably since February or March. So good to see all of you. I hope you all are doing well and staying healthy. Want to talk to you about the call committee process. Just a quick reminder of who's on the call committee. We have Angela Kempf, Ashley Cole, Sarah Schreier, Paul Mushbaugh, Kirk Hines, and myself. Sarah Schreier will be leading the call committee through this process, so she's our team leader. And where we're at in the process, where we are going to be making some updates to our ministry site profile before we go forward and publish it for public view, I guess, if you will. The ELCA asks that you follow a particular process where, you know, first and foremost, the senior pastor retires, and then an interim is assigned to your church. And then at that point, we begin the process for creating the ministry site profile. And we had already started that earlier this year, so we're pretty, we're very far along. We're just making some updates. And that'll be occurring over the next probably six weeks. And our goal is to have the updated ministry site profile to council for review in January and approval in January. And at that point, then by the end of January, our hope is to have the ministry site profile published. And at that point, then candidates who are looking to take a new call will see our ministry site profile. And just the ministry site profile is kind of like our own church's resume. It details information about who we are as St. Mark's, our size, our location, what we're looking for in a senior pastor, and includes information about, you know, what's going on at St. Mark's? What have we been working on? What are we excited about? And so all of that information is critical to candidates reviewing and looking for what they consider a fit for, for what they're looking for in their next call. So going forward from January, what will happen is candidates who are interested in St. Mark's will submit their rostered ministry profile. It's essentially the equivalent of their resume, if you will, to our synod bishop. And the bishop will review those candidates and then pass along candidates to our call committee. And our call committee then will review those candidates and determine, we'll have at least one interview with each candidate that comes in. And so the timing of that is something that we can't yet predict just yet. But our hope and our goal is to receive a call for a senior pastor in the summer of 2021.
Thank you, Case. Do you, does anyone have any questions or comments about that? Okay. Very good. Then I'm going to ask Pastor Steve if he could share just a little bit from the Get Acquainted sessions that he and I held in September.
Certainly. And it seems like forever ago, but it was really just a few weeks ago. Pastor Westfall and I were able to host six separate Get Acquainted and kind of vision kind of discussion groups. Five of those were in person. One of those was a virtual gathering. And so they were, they were great opportunities both to just sit and really get to know some of you in smaller group settings and then just talk about the three questions Pastor Westfall asked us. Let's remember our past. Let's kind of talk about our present, and then let's start envisioning our future. And in those groups, we had folks that were 60-year members and folks that had joined within the last year. We had some of, we had folks that, we had teenagers and pre-teens, as well as folks who were in their 70s and 80s. So it was a great kind of cross-section of folks from our church sharing those three discussion questions. And across the board, folks, as they remember their past, it was very relationally driven. So they remembered how, they remembered St. Mark's as the place where they were married, or they were baptized, or they had their kids baptized and confirmed. And they remembered just so many stories of how God had worked in the life of worship and small groups or Bible studies. And they remember just kind of some of those big moments in the life of the church, whether it was, you know, the building of the education wing or the building of the family life center and just kind of the vision that went into those past events that became part of the future vision of the church. And so those were exciting, just to hear folks talk about the past, but always in a way that was impacting the present and the vision for the future. And then in the present, folks talked about, it was just very, very positive across the board. So folks talked about, you know, the reality that we're in a time of transition, whether that's transitioning because COVID has shaken up our ministries or transition because you're in a pastoral transition timeframe, but seeing the opportunity in those transitions. And folks, as we were, Pastor Westfall was very clear in saying, when you remember or think about the present, let's think about it in a non-COVID mindset. Let's kind of envision normal. And so folks were really excited about how the church has grown in its missional impact over the last several most recent years. People are really getting involved with things like WIP and Dream Center and making a difference in the local community. And they were excited about how some of our small groups are starting to really get traction. They were really excited about how the Family Life Center has become not just a building that we're proud of, but a place for ministry that people are excited about gathering in. And it's just a great way to welcome people, maybe a first-time visitor. It's a great bridge to help them start meeting people and get connected, so we don't lose folks out the back door once they've joined us in, say, a worship gathering. And then in the present, folks really talked about how grateful they are that we have become a nimble church, whether it was getting creative with small groups or getting creative with our ministries to children and youth, or even offering our worship services. They are excited about the way we are. We've been flexible and nimble, and obviously, we're seeing that right now as we're having a town hall Zoom meeting and getting ready for an online worship service. So folks were really excited and grateful for the leadership of the church that's making that flexibility happen. And then that kind of bled over into the vision for the future. And really, the word that came for the future was grow. They see this as a community that's continuing to grow, those of you that met with us, and they want to be a part of that growth. You want to be a part of that growth in the years ahead. And you want staff, and you want lay leaders who are aligned to help us keep reaching people in our community, so we can grow the church. And then we heard just consistently, we want to keep growing younger. We want to keep reaching the young families who are moving into this community, who are engaging in schools and community groups. You want to engage them as their church home. And so you're really seeing a vision for ministry that will engage these families through children's ministry, through youth ministry, through small groups that will connect with younger parents, and then even worship that is reaching people that are looking for a variety of different styles or times. So you have that, you want to grow, you want to grow with young families, and then just that key that you want to grow in faith and discipleship. That's part of your mission statement. But we're seeing even now, again in the pandemic, that we want to kind of enable online resources. We want to resource families at home. We want to continue having a strong confirmation class. We want to offer worship that is still meaningful, even if it's online. And we want to keep providing opportunities for folks, whether it's Operation Christmas Child or WIP, or connecting at the Dream Center. We want to do the things now that are helping people grow in their faith and their discipleship now, so that it helps them stay connected to Christ and the church in the future. And so just a lot of positive energy in a time that could be very negative or anxious. I would say that we had a pretty universal sense of the energy and the positive kind of mentality of the church as they remember, as you remember your past, as you kind of stay excited in the present, and then as you look to the future and see a lot of potential in the midst of that. And so we're just grateful to be a part of putting those pieces together to make those visions become reality.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, then we will go to Derek Schreier, who is not only our vice president, but he's also been the chair of the Constitution Committee and has devoted a great deal of time in the last three months to helping to update the Constitution. Derek?
Thank you, Pastor. Good morning, everyone. I think it would have been one of the first get-to-know-you meetings that the exec team had with Pastor Westfall, that he challenged exec to review and restate our constitution. And this was a bit of an educational process for me, because I had no idea that the ELCA, every three years, the National Church publishes a model constitution with an expectation that the member of congregations would revise their constitution into conformity with it, at least certain mandatory provisions. So the ELCA, the National Church, they most recently restated their model constitution in 2019, and they do so every three years. St. Mark's last restated its constitution in 2011. So as you can imagine, it's been a long time since we, as a church, looked at our constitution. I think the timing with this being a year of transition, it was a good time to do this. It will make, as part of the call process, our church and part of the ministry site profile, it will be more appealing to potential pastoral candidates, because they will recognize the fact that St. Mark's as a congregation is, has the latest and greatest version of the constitution, and it would symbolize that we are, have a good organizational structure. So what we did is we formed, as Pastor Westfall mentioned, a Constitution Committee. I was the chair of it. Also serving on it was Case Pudick, the current president, and then the three most recent past presidents. So that would include Dean Hefta, Kirk Hines, and Cindy Calvert. And we met two or three different times. Actually, I think it was three times. And the focus of that committee was really chapters 11, 12, and 13 of the Constitution, because most of the rest of the Constitution, if you would look at the link that was sent as part of the Weekly Buzz, we as a congregation do not really have an ability to customize it. The ELCA has, as I mentioned earlier, certain provisions that require all congregations adopt it, and those are denoted in the Constitution with an asterisk. So with the exceptions of chapters 11 through 13, most of the rest of those, it was just bringing the document up to the ELCA's current model constitution. Our committee focused on 11, chapters 11 through 13, and really just trying to, number one, make sure our constitution matches what we actually do as a church and from an organizational structure. Two, we wanted to more clearly spell out what each council member's roles and responsibilities were. I think sometimes it has been a challenge in recruiting lay leaders to various council positions, because there wasn't really clear guideposts as far as what the responsibilities and expectations of the position were. And the third thing is just to kind of reorganize how our church's governing documents were organized to make it easier to understand. And I'll give an example. We had a combined council meeting last week where many, many years ago, and no one can remember exactly when, there was a resolution adopted saying that the council should consider each year, if there was an interest, appointing a youth representative to council. And that was buried in the very last page of our current constitution and governing documents. And now we have reordered things, and that continuing resolution is right below the section that deals with the number of members of council and so forth. So as you go through the draft constitution, you will see there are Constitution provisions, there are bylaw provisions, and there are continuing resolution provisions. Constitution provisions, not surprisingly, are much more difficult to change. It requires both the synod's approval and the congregation's approval. And we are able to go on a much quicker timeframe. Like, if we were just going to go in and change our constitution on our own initiative, it would actually be a two-year process. But because we are bringing our document to be in conformance with the model constitution, it's a much more expedited process where we can get synod approval and we can get congregational approval in one year. So that the plan is, we've already submitted the draft that was circulated in the buzz to the synod, and the synod has approved the draft. We discussed the draft at the Congregational Council meeting last week and incorporated council's feedback. And the goal is for council to recommend that the draft constitution be put on the agenda for the annual meeting in January, and the council is set to vote on that in December. And then obviously, if it's on the agenda, the ask of council then would be for the congregation to approve the amended and restated constitution. So that's, that's the process of changing constitutional provisions. You will also notice there are bylaws and continuing resolution provision. Bylaws provisions are more difficult to change, but not as difficult as constitutional provisions. Bylaw provisions do not require synod approval, but they do require congregational approval. So as you look at the bylaw provisions, just keep in mind that those are not easy to change as well. Continuing resolution provisions, those do not require either synod or congregational approval. Those are just longstanding resolutions adopted by council that can be changed by a vote of a future council. So in a nutshell, that's, that's what we've been working on, on the Constitution Committee for the last three months or so. And we're at a point where I think we've had a lot of good feedback, a lot of good discussion, both at the council level and the committee level. I do ask that everyone on this Zoom meeting, take a look at it. No pride in authorship. If you do find a grammatical error, or if you want to discuss adding a comma here or word choice, absolutely, it'd be welcome to have those discussions. But those discussions need to happen pretty quickly, because we, we really need the church council to approve the constitution by December 7th. So that gives us about a week to play around with the language. If you do have any specific questions or comments, please reach out to either Pastor Westfall or me. So I'll pause there and see if anyone has any specific questions or comments.
Oh, Derek, this is Pam Ripley. Thank you for all your work, first of all. Am I missing something? Where do I find, where do we find the constitution that we can view? Were you saying we could view it?
Yes. I believe it was, there was a link to download it on the Weekly Buzz email. And by all means, if you want the church to print out a copy, we will be happy to print it out for you and either mail it or for you to pick it up at the church office as well.
Oh, thanks. I do get the Weekly Buzz. I just missed it somewhere along, so I'll go back and look. Thank you.
You're welcome. And in the Buzz, there was actually a little cover memo that kind of highlighted what I just said, too, and some other changes. The one change I meant to, as I look here at my notes, that I didn't cover in my remarks, there are currently 12 lay leaders on the church council. And after some discussion, there will be a period of transition where the officers of the Financial Secretary and Treasurer who were. All right. Okay. Not only the Financial Secretary and Treasurer, who are church officers, were also full-voting council members, there will be a period of transition where, after the current office holders, their terms have expired, they will remain officers of St. Mark's, but not full-voting council members. And to replace them on council, the mission coordinators will be a full-voting, a full council position. I'm sorry. Mission and dump. Yeah, the, I'm sorry. The mission coordinators, and then Cindy Calvert's role as the, why can't I think?
Memorials.
Memorials team leader will also be full council position. So there will remain 12 council members, but just the composition will change a little bit to benefit with our current ministries that we serve here at St. Mark's.
Any other questions or comments?
I just sent a chat, but I'd like Derek's email address.
Sure. I'll type it in the chat then.
Okay. Thank you.
And if you have any questions or comments, or if you can't find the Weekly Buzz, I know sometimes that gets caught up in email spams. I'm happy to email you two directly a copy of the draft constitution as well.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Derek, for leading this initiative. It's an important thing, kind of behind the scenes, that keeps everybody in alignment and working well together. We'll go on then to the Burton House Committee or Task Force, and Case will be introducing that and the names of the people that will be serving on it.
All right. Thank you, Pastor. So Burton House, if you recall, November of 2018 is actually when we purchased the house that's across Burton Street from the church. It faces South Main and has the parking lot behind it. So that was, again, as I said, purchased in November of 2018. And we have put together an ad hoc committee to do two things. First, define what the Burton House purpose will be as it, as it represents St. Mark's and our mission and our vision as a church. And then to develop ideas of how we might utilize the Burton House under the umbrella of our mission. And so put together a seven-person team. In addition, Pastor Steve is also the eighth member of that team. The team is comprised of the following people. It is Joe Adams, Dick Weirs, Nate Custer. Nate Custer, Karen Kramer, Ashley Cole, Gwen Ziegler, and our mission coordinators, Nick and Pam Ripley. I prepared a charter for this team to utilize. And so we are having our kickoff meeting on Tuesday, the 24th, so this coming Tuesday. And the framework of their work is going to involve kind of two phases. The first phase, we hope to have completed by the end of March, and that will involve the team doing a discovery process, reaching out to all of the ministries within St. Mark's and talking to those ministry teams about their thoughts around Burton House, their own ministry, their needs. But then also going outside of St. Mark's, looking into the community at needs around the community, and just identifying where there might be opportunities that St. Mark's might be able to utilize the Burton House for. And so it's both an internal and external review or discovery process, if you will. And as a team, they're going to bring that back and really articulate and define a purpose around Burton House. And then develop three to five ideas that they feel are at a conceptual phase, just kind of more big picture, not a lot of practicalities behind it. And that will be presented to the council for review. And again, by the end of March is what we're hoping for. And council will help to then further discuss that with this team and narrow those concepts to two. And then the team will go back to work on what we would consider a Phase Two of work. And that Phase Two of work, they'll dig down deeper into more of the details of what it would take to do, you know, to launch this concept into a real idea. What would it take to get Burton House prepared for? What would it take to, you know, maintain this type of initiative? And making sure that it also fits within our mission and vision. And both of those ideas will then be offered out to the congregation. And we will, we will allow the congregation to have an opportunity to review them and take a congressional vote on which direction we go. And we're hoping, the hope for date is kind of early fall, like August time, when that Phase Two would come before the congregation. So that is the, that's the plan. And those are our leaders. There is, we're going to have the Burton team kind of self-elect their team leader. So there is not one to share with you at this point. I'm sure that'll happen at our kickoff meeting on Tuesday. So take any questions that anyone has?
Thank you, Case, for that. I know it's an important development in St. Mark's total ministry here. So I'm grateful that you have pulled that group of people together. And then, do you want to say anything, Case, about the response to the pandemic? I mean, this, this week, we had to suddenly shift again, and it might not be the last time. So it's just good to keep in touch with people. I hope that everybody saw the email about our current plans. But Case, why don't you elaborate, and then we can ask for questions?
Certainly. We, November's had a couple of shifts for us as it relates to the pandemic, and as our state and our region and our local area has seen continued growth in cases of COVID. And as we see our healthcare, healthcare, our hospitals and healthcare providers, you know, further getting stressed. You know, our exec team is, is really keeping an eye on and listening to our Departments of Public Health, our local healthcare professionals, our health ministry team. Those are all the, all those that we're listening to, as well as our Senate direction. And so the pace is picking up, if you will. And so we, we had to respond this week as we moved into a tier-three level of mitigation. And we really, we had a really good discussion at exec, and there were some really great comments about, you know, as a, as a member of the community, St. Mark's needs to take a responsible step to, and try to ensure that we are not contributing to the spread and the continued burden of our healthcare professionals. And that really was the, the instigation for moving to a live stream only on Sundays. And for the sake of just making it easier, knowing that this isn't going to decline anytime soon, and, and also, you know, for the sake of just kind of making it easier, we, we decided four weeks out to continue the live stream, so that gets us to December 13th. But it's also enough time for us to, as we are approaching that December 13th Sunday, to begin looking at how we might plan for Christmas Eve worship. And I won't touch on that, because I know, Pastor, you're going to talk about that. But we have full intentions of making sure that we let everyone know with enough advance, as best as we can, that, you know, what the plans are at St. Mark's for Christmas Eve. And we'll continue to listen to all of those, you know, the medical professionals and, and, you know, locally and statewide to help guide, you know, our decisions. We've, you know, our, our goal has always been to, you know, the health and safety of our staff, but all of our members of St. Mark's, we, when we do open up, we want everyone to feel comfortable that they can come to a safe environment and worship. So I think that's, that's everything I had, kind of my points that I wanted to share. Any questions from, from all of you?
Thank you, Case, for staying on top of this important issue then. As, I think it's really helping people to feel safe and to be healthy through all of this. Well, then, the last thing is just a quick preview of Advent and Christmas plans. And we are having the theme of Come Home to Bethlehem with the sense that, at this time, I'm sensing that people are feeling that draw to worship Christ, to be part of Christmas celebrations. And since many of us are sheltering at home or staying home more often, we thought we would direct our attention to that and also do some things that allow us to be at home while still being part of a church family. And so, for example, I'm going to ask all of you here if by Tuesday you could take some kind of a digital photo of you in your home with your loved ones, and that has something to do with Advent, whether it's putting out your Advent wreaths or lighting that first candle, or using, there's some Advent bags that are now available for everybody to take home, and they've got a candle and some activities and an Advent spiral in them. Or there's an Advent devotional that is also available so that everybody can celebrate at home. But we're asking if you would, by Tuesday, take a photo of that and send it into the church so that we can show those in the livestreamed worship service. As we light the candle in the sanctuary, we'll be able to share something from our church family with everybody. As Case said at the very beginning of this, there are some people that he hasn't seen since February or March. And I'm very well aware that people are craving that community, that sense of church family. So please take advantage of that and just know that we are still planning, as Case said, for Christmas. We are having four weeks of online worship only. If we have to change or extend that, we will, but we'll inform you. But we are taking poinsettia orders, and we hope to see the front of the church filled with that beautiful red color from poinsettias. We are planning this year three Christmas Eve services. And then, because it's a little more awkward with the registration and the limit in the attendance, we're going to have identical services, except that the music will be different at them. All of them will have a sermon and a children's sermon, and they will all have Holy Communion. The way that we do it right now does not take a long time, so that will not extend the worship services. And we're going to make each one of them special. We're going to sanitize in the sanctuary in between the worship services. And we're going to have 75 places available for each service pre-registered, and that will allow for 25 places for walk-ins. So what I'm going to ask you to do is, within a week, when those registrations are available, please sign up and encourage others to sign up early so that we have a sense as to where the demand is. And if needed, we will add extra services. They may be earlier or on even an earlier day. They may be smaller services. We're trying to do everything we can to limit the number of crowds. But we will try and accommodate all those who want to worship together in the sanctuary. So those are some of the plans right now. And I'll ask if there's any questions or comments about that. Let me ask you, if you feel like you are receiving enough communication about these plans and everything else, can you just put a thumbs up? Okay, very good. I'm seeing that you feel like you're staying in touch. That's another thing that we are working hard at, is making sure that all of our households get the information that is important. And so within a week, you should be receiving the monthly marksman. We're going to resume publishing that and mailing it out so that every household, whether they're online or not, will have something in their hands that comes from the church. It's going to be about half the size of the quarterly marksman. That will save some printing and postage costs and might make it actually a little easier to skim through. And so we're working right now to finalize that so that everybody can stay informed and be as engaged or as involved as you're able to in these times. Well, that's what we had on our agenda. Case?
Did get a question come in. I wanted to address it. It was a question about whether or not Christmas Eve would be livestreamed. And going forward until, until further notice, you know, we will have livestreaming for Sunday Worship, Christmas Eve Worship, all worship services. We will plan to livestream at least one of them, if there's more than one on a, on a day. So we don't plan to end that anytime soon at this point.
Yes, thank you. I forgot about that. If we have the in-sanctuary onsite worship services, the plan right now is to livestream the 5:00 PM service so that you can watch it then, or it will be posted and you can watch it later on if you want. If we're not having onsite worship, we will always be having livestream worship. It's part of our Christian life and our discipleship to worship. And so we can do that whether we're onsite, online, or some other means. So I urge you all to keep on growing in faith and in discipleship, which is our mission statement. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
We got one pastor. Diana would like to. Diana, you're muted.
I am muted. I just want to remind everyone that we will still have a mint and tree this year, and you can drop off your donations in the main street door. And we are doing the LSSI Children, and the Weekly Buzz should give you all the information you need to participate in that.
Yeah. Don Hoferd here. This is the only chance we get to thank Case and all the rest of you for doing all the work you do. It must be close to a full-time job. So thank you and counsel for all your work.
Thank you. There is a phenomenal exec team that I get to be a part of. And so a lot of, a lot of good folks, a lot of hard-working folks on that team. We're blessed with two wonderful interim pastors, the energy of which is, is not measurable. And so I thank them as well, and a great council.
Even as you're saying that, though, Don, I would like to echo your thank you. We have got a very hard-working, well, president and vice president that we've heard from, as, as well as other council members and exec committee. They're not taking this as a time to be dormant. They're taking this as a time to take some initiative and some new life. And you've seen what Carol has been doing here with the pledge appeal that has just gone above and beyond what people dreamed. And I am personally very grateful for my colleague that I just got to know. And, you know, we didn't know each other whatsoever. We didn't pick each other, but we feel like we were chosen to be working together. So I'm very grateful for Pastor Steve, too. Any other comments? Questions? Okay. Well, very good. It is now, according to my iPhone, 10:32. So we're going to end early. How many meetings have you been to that ended early rather than late? Bravo, everyone. Thanks for all your good work and your interest. We'll see you in worship. Pastor Steve and I are going to go head over, and the musicians, I'm sure, are already warming up. They are so good. Blessings to all of you.